Hey, six o'clock, I called meeting the order. You all please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, since they always do that out of order, Christina has the rule, I assume?
Yeah. Maybe one of these days I'll switch around.
Okay, so you can move now to approving tonight's agenda. Last second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The lights consent agenda, lengthy as it is. Will be passed in one motion unless there is an item that someone needs to discuss further. I would like to. Let's be filled in on what happened here in this irrigation damage.
So pull it out with your motion and it'll be discussed.
Yep, looks like it happened not that long ago. I don't know where it's from, but which. If you want to put that in the form of a motion or on the item, we remove A E. On my consent to further discussion, okay? I will second that, Christina. We have anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Just give me a moment, move to the item.
I'll slur Fredrickson to your question, or is it something that you're? Just not? Well, I'm totally unaware of it. Okay, I'd like to be briefed on them.
I can, I can fill.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so he's right, it did happen fairly recently, it happened the end of August. Um, there was an incident up at the irrigation fields where one of the irrigators. Was powered up and there was a piece of our farm lease, farm lease owners. Equipment in the way, which made our irrigator tip over and need repair. So a claim to the lead of Minnesota cities has been placed. Of course, obviously our repairs have to be paid for and I'm waiting for final approval from the lead to reimburse us, which would be less our deductible of two hundred fifty dollars. The irrigators are that particular section that's now repaired. Unfortunately, because our irrigators age is what it is, um, a lot of what was done. Um, have to be brought up as close to the size of pipe that we have. There was even a reducer stuck on one section in order to make the other part that got bent straighten out.
So this dollar amount is totally for the repair of our equipment?
Correct.
Not for the repair of the farmer's equipment that were granted?
No.
The irrigators are part of the sewage?
Yes, yes, so after everything goes out of the ponds, then we irrigate out on our fields. So and this is just one of four of our irrigators.
It was all of city equipment.
That is correct. Luckily it's covered under insurance too. They're not too.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so the farmer is not completing what?
That is completely correct, yes, yes. It's not the first time our irrigators have had an oops. Um, prior to my administration, two of them got tangled up amongst each other. Um, and I know there's been another couple of issues in between the last ten years too, so.
It's not a perfect system, so.
Well, you know, depending upon how wet the property is out there too, they get stuck. But yeah, they go on a six hour timeframe run when they're turned on. And there was, there was no human presence when this happened. Um, so it was discovered after the fact.
So the lead of Minnesota cities is the adjusting the claim?
They are, they are our insurance company, so we are making a claim on our insurance company for the damage in the materials. And labor.
And security insurance is our agency?
That's correct, yes, our local agents, yeah. Okay.
Good, my understanding is now complete.
Perfect.
Good, then I would move we approve item A E on the consent agenda. Uh, any further discussion on it? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And none, passes. One word, the Black Duck Forum. Anyone to speak?
You know, one thing I'd like to bring up.
Yeah, is it on?
It's not about the bowl of snow.
Okay.
Um, the bathrooms at the Wayside Rest, you know, changing station there. And there's been a few different times I've been down there for either farmer's market or other things where parents have complained about it. Um, if that could be brought up later on to at least give a changing station, a living room, at least one would be nice. Just thought.
Good. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Anyone else for? The Black Duck Forum. Seeing none, Christina, I will move to you on the. Nope.
Somebody can start first. Let's do committees first.
Yep, reports, committees and staff, we will go to Shonda next.
Um, we have some exciting events coming up. Um, we did implement a ten percent discount for veterans and seniors at customers' requests. They were driving to deliver in Bemidji because. They. So those are going to be Wednesdays. Come in ten percent off their total purchase.
Does anyone know if the grocery store is still doing that?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Certified that they are.
Thank you.
That's. You know, I was just thinking that, you know, if there was, that they're, everybody's on a Wednesday, that's perfect.
That's pretty nice for people, especially in the winter time.
It's only Wednesday as well. I've lived in larger metropolitan communities and it's only the first Wednesday of the month. Continue, please.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, that's fine. That was a good question, that was what something that was asked. Before we made it Wednesdays was, yeah, what are the grocery store? Um, we have the acoustics coming in for Halloween party. The end of the month. We're going to do a wine event, a stock up event. Try to stimulate some sales in our wine department. So on the fifteenth and sixteenth, you can vote go, so you're gonna, you can buy one and get one half off. Of course, the half off is going to be the lesser price, just like everybody else. And we're just gonna just pull this two day event, see if, see if it can stimulate some of the. Yeah, some sales and hopefully they go home and drink them all before Thanksgiving, no? But yeah, that's kind of what we got going on. And spend pretty busy, we're gonna have some nice weekends, nice weather weekends. Some people have been in town, so.
I have one question, what, have you established the cutoff aid for the senior discount?
Um, sixty-two and older is the cutoff.
God bless you, thank you.
So it's veterans and seniors?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, okay. If not all seniors, are veterans?
Right.
Vice versa.
That's right, so if you, you know, if you.
Got it.
Were in the storm, you can come in and get the percentage off.
Do they have to prove that?
No, they don't have to prove that, I.
I can't imagine it might be.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to just believe in people a little bit, so.
Good idea.
Like I, somebody says that they're a senior and I'm not going to card them. Only if they look like they're not up grade. Then I will card them.
Okay, uh, anything else for Shonda? Do you have anything else for us?
No.
Thank you. I don't see Miss Dean, so.
No, um, uh, she, they're working on the getting things ready to button up out there. I think the last day they're open is actually the twelfth. But I wanted to make sure that the golf board meeting was noted, that's, that's scheduled for the twentieth. Um, at course. And we.
Good.
At two o'clock.
Yep. Library. You can do it from wherever you would wish, Mary, I will not make you stand at the podium.
But I don't need to be, so I need to be on the screen. Um, I talked to Kelly today and asked if she was coming and she was down in Pine River already for a, um, a seminar they were doing for all of. Librarians, I guess it would be, and it was a seminar on building with three civilians, which is a good work tomorrow, a tour of headquarters. And doing some marketing evaluation for the whole region and other library items, she said. So the thing she asked for me to, um, make sure that you knew about was that Mandy Rosberg was hired for the new assistant. She's gonna start tomorrow, this is after Lorraine Roach retired and went to Florida with her family.
Good.
And, um. Then trunk or treat and the flyers are out. Um, we needed to talk to Mike about opening the restrooms at the Wayside Rest that night. Um, that October thirty-first from five to six thirty. I know we discussed to do it a little bit earlier because it's dark earlier anymore. So I don't know, do I need to make sure, still talking to Mike? And then, um, there's an after school movie being planned already for next Tuesday, the eighteenth. And there were a lot of leftover items from our summer reading program, so they're gonna do a craft also that evening. Um, I don't know if I can go through the other thing by. Not enough.
Like all the during it or Halloween?
Yes, we decided to do Halloween. But it's only in October, I can still get home with the, who the next? All right, with all the candidate meeting, good luck.
Mary, I have a question.
Uh huh.
I have it, um, I have it on a big sign out there and I have it from five to seven, so it's from.
Yeah, five to six thirty, yeah.
Okay, I gotta change that.
And I'm pretty sure, I couldn't find a flyer today, but I think I burnt one in the window, okay.
Yes, so it's set up at four.
Set up at four, but, um, treaters are just start at five and we said we probably wouldn't go anywhere on six thirty.
Okay.
And it's also going to be at the, um, St. Anne Catholic Church.
I have not.
Two locations, okay.
Yeah.
Two locations like we did last year.
Usually they're on, yeah.
But we decided to advertise to help them together.
Is the library handing out trophies for best trump down there this year?
May or not last year, so maybe. I'll remind them of that.
I didn't know. I've judged the last two years, so I was wondering.
I didn't think to ask.
And this year I will decline from judging.
You don't want to judge him.
No, because. Melissa will be.
Oh, that's true.
I don't want.
You're gonna have a conflict.
We don't want a conflict of interest. Not, not on something as important as Halloween, you can't, you can't mess with a holiday like that, that's big.
Okay.
If he doesn't win, he doesn't want the conflict at home.
That's exactly why he's trying to.
Smart radio.
Okay. Uh, is anything else, Miriam?
Um, I'm up next.
Then we can move on. To our administrator's report.
I'll defer back Miriam. Yeah, I, I'm representing the Black Duck Chamber now. I said, well, I'm coming anyway. Um, we had sent in a request for fund, public fund request and we have one of the chamber members here. It was on the insurance package policy for the city of Black Duck through the Black Duck Chamber of Commerce is what. Title was on that. Um, and what we're requesting, oh, did I not copy it? Here we go. It's six hundred twenty-two dollars for the portion of it that is covering the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we paid that, or the city has paid that in the past and the chamber prepays that. And so, um, we're asking for that to be reimbursed to the chamber. Um, it started seven twenty-five of twenty-two to seven twenty-five of twenty-three. So should have been this last month probably. Um, Chamber sponsors, Wayside Rest along with the city and all the visitors who stop with that are in our area now. We've left that, make a lot of stops in there and we also sponsor events like the Bat Block Backwood Bash. Um, for the families in our communities and including others who stop and come in their community during our timeframe. And have a parade, they've had a crawfish broth roll at Royal and it's been passed. But now it's gone to more bingo events and recently, um. Supported the golf event this year to help with the golf course in the chamber. So I'm here to request that you, um, consider us for that six hundred and twenty dollars.
And just to clarify, the board numbers, this should be coming under the liquor rent fund listed on your fund balance report for those that haven't been around during donation requests. Current balance of that fund is ten thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars, uh, current budgets. Um, that, uh, for donations was like four thousand dollars. And we, the city's already donated sixty-six hundred dollars in donations so far in two thousand twenty-two.
How much have, you got ten thousand, wow? Did you just say?
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, can I speak to that a little bit? That gets added to from the rent revenue from the pull tabs in the, in the bar. So it's a liquid number.
Correct, so.
Well, uh. Would entertain in motion. I would entertain in motion. If someone wants to make it. I can make a motion to approve the. Our request for six hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, motion and a second. Do we have, or in a second?
Tony, you made the motion and Don seconded.
No.
John, John made the.
I'm asking for a second.
Thank you.
Make a second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this? No.
May I ask the question?
Yes.
This is an increase over the shit story, history of the insurance, I see. Last year was five hundred eighty-six dollars. It's.
And I think.
Continuing to go up.
Yes.
Which, which all insurance is.
All insurance of R and I was thinking she said. Not more than, no, that was about that, ten percent, but that might be a little bit more than ten percent. I do know in a lot of things that we've been working on is that fear of experiencing, uh, ten percent or more.
I just wondered.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, we're seeing across the board in the city too, so.
Then the liability is gonna go up and certainly any property is going to go up. Because of the expense of everything. But yes, it was, what was the price then?
Five eighty-six last year.
Any other discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain. Motion passes. I'm the vice president of the chamber, I can't, that's why if you were looking at me like. Not in favor, I'm all in favor of it, but wait.
The conflict ends coming up again?
There, there it is. Onto the, back to Christina.
Okay, and then I would, um, introduce Tori. Yep, uh, she is here representing Erica for Black Duck Area Toys for Kids. Um, they have also submitted a donation request, um, for this year's event and I'll.
Well, I'm Tori Neff and I've helped with the Black Dickery Toys since twenty twenty. I've personally seen the impact of this program has had on helping families in a Black Dickery school. And I would like to give a little breakdown on the numbers. In twenty twenty, we had two hundred and twenty kids and sixty-seven families. In twenty twenty-one, we had two hundred and sixty-seven kids and a hundred families. We are expected to have around the same number of kids this year. In twenty twenty-one, we were able to collect enough funds to fulfill the gifts, hats and mittens. We had many generous business owners and community that helped us reach that goal. We are currently waiting for a grant from Operation Randall. The last couple of years, we have received two thousand dollars. We have a budget of forty dollars per kid and gifts and fifteen per kid and hats and mittens. Last year, we did see a price increase in the hat and mittens. The extra fund we received from everyone helped over those expenses. We are confident that we can still maintain at the forty dollar budget per kid this year for the gifts. The committee took advantage of sales and shopping throughout the year. We are currently evaluating the hats and mittens prices and situation for this upcoming year. We possibly have a sponsorship for all the hats and mittens for this year, twenty twenty-two. We understand that the last two years, the committee has given a very generous gift and are asking for any amount and any amount is very helpful.
Thank you, Tori. And as you can see, the donation history.
So that's two hundred and sixty-seven consulting?
Yes.
That cost a fifty-five dollars a kid for.
Uh, forty dollars for a, forty.
For gifts. For the house and that, so that's fifty-five.
Yep.
We raised fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars last year.
I don't have that information, Erica does, but okay.
I just did a quick calculation, that's a lot.
It is a substantial amount of money. I know when we gave four thousand dollars the first time, it was COVID. First year twenty twenty there, but. Nobody, we were concerned, but. A lot of parents were gonna be out of work and it would touch a lot more people. And the next year.
The devastation after COVID. Pretty much.
I don't feel that we can give a four thousand dollar donation this year. We had to use some of our liquor rent fund for. Other expenses that were for the pond. So it's a wonderful program, but I don't think we can give what we have in the past. I think if we were to cut it in half. That two thousand dollars would be. Stuff in the right direction for us, or?
What else think you do?
Yep.
I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on it? I don't like to play Scrooge. But.
Yeah, it seems like we donated that last, that last four thousand, kind of made that a. Kind of known, it seems like to me that, that was a high donation again and we probably wouldn't be doing that.
It's, it's never, it's always been known that any donation that we give, it's never, it's not a, it doesn't. Set a precedent per day, so it's not. Yeah, the amount you cited would be double what we gave in twenty seventeen, for, for the COVID, half of what was given last year, so I think. That would be a half a medium, I think we'll get in the middle on that.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess with that, I, I will make a motion that we approve two thousand dollars in the liquor rent fund to the, uh. Toys for Kids Program, Black Duck. I will second that, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this?
No.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tori.
I'm gonna skip over to see them.
Okay.
And, uh, move to Tony, um, for D. Since Mr. Pouch is in person.
Yeah, Mr. Rosberg. Um, well, I'm Tony Rosberg, um, I put on the bowl of snow last year. Um, last year, that went very, very well considering I only have three weeks to really get planned, get fun together and put the lights up. Um, I'm trying to get a ball rolling on that a little bit earlier this year. Um, so far, what we've got, um, what we're hoping to do, um, we've got, I talked with Kelly at the, uh, library. Um, every year when they had Santa, they would give out books to all the kids. So what we are looking at possibly doing is a scavenger hunt for the kids. Um, where one of Santa's little helpers would be hideous and stole the pages to the night before Christmas. And the kids will be going around to different businesses in town with their parents, their brothers, their sisters. Or any friends from high school and collecting pages to the book. Um, once all the pages are collected, Mrs. Claus will put all the pages in her magic box. And I'm looking at a book about this big of the night, or the night before Christmas, uh, pop up with, um, music. So she can do a reading with the kids and then all the kids will get a copy of the night before Christmas to bring home to their families. Um, we're also, well, I was actually, um, very blessed this year as far as lights though. Um, when we took the lights down, we only lost two strings of lights and that was due to my mistake of tying the strings together. I actually used the, the blue wire that held the lights together. And I wrapped them at the ends, so when the weight of the snow got on them, they weren't able to just come loose. So now I know, don't strap them together. Um, so we only lost two strings of all the lights we had last year. Um. Then this, uh, the spring or the summer, when we had the all city garage sale, I was on a mission for Christmas lights. And every house that I went to, when they heard what I was looking for and why, they were all donated. Almost doubled our lights.
Nice.
Wow, yeah, it was amazing. Um, also.
Really good thinking. I seriously, it is.
Do they all work?
They all work, I actually, my wife was, was kind of annoyed because I actually had all the lights that were out the Wayside Rest. And all the lights that I had gotten from garage sales, I'm sitting in the living room, just gotta plug in, test. And all the lights that I had gotten from garage sales, I'm sitting in the living room, just to plug in, testing them all, rolling them all up, getting them in totes. It took over a day just to wrap everything up and test everything, but they all work. They're all safe. We had two strings that were not safe from the donations from the garage sales that I got rid of. They're all, they're all good to go. But yeah, we almost doubled them there. And I'm kind of honored because I was approached by two of the gardening club members and they want me to take over on their lights and they're gonna donate all of theirs as well. So I'm kind of honored they've been doing it for a long time. I appreciate them thinking about having me take over on it for them. So we'll have all those lights as well. I'm gonna be getting in contact with, I can't remember his last name, but Gerald, who does the sleigh rides. To have sleigh rides out there like the library have done in the past.
It's not.
Not, she is not, it is not, so Gerald, thank you. About doing sleigh rides out there. My plan last year, after everything, I still have, you know, the, the app of how great the event was going. I am, I have got the phone numbers and I have tried contacting a gentleman who actually raises reindeer and brings them out for events. Not heard back from him, I've told him several times, so that's gonna get kind of access here. So we're gonna go with the horse sleigh rides if I can get, you know, I'll get that set up. Another thing I want to do after the book reading is sled races for parents and sisters and brothers to hold on younger siblings in a race at the Wayside Rest. Basically more family events, just because that's what we wanted this event for, was to bring the community and the families together. So like I said last year, we wanted the event to continue to like having a good event and have it grow every year. So we would be looking at almost a full day of different things going on at the Wayside Rest for parents, kids, siblings. So basically what I'm asking is one, that we could do it, we're looking at November twenty-sixth. Reason for it is after talking with Jake, Jacob Lean, he suggested the twenty-sixth because the night we light in the midday is on the Friday after Thanksgiving. Ours would be the Saturday after and the parade, all the floats from the parade, even Niggy would still be assembled. So I'm gonna be, if we are able to do this, I'm gonna talk to everybody that's in the parade and see if we can get some of those floats here. Because that was a big thing, having Jake's, we're winning great float out here and that was even having Santa ride in. That was actually his idea and I was so grateful for it. It was, it was amazing float, so I'm gonna see if I can get more of the the night we light parade. So yeah, I'm asking for approval to have the event again as well as same as last year, if the electric won't get paid.
And all the lights that you put up are at the Wayside Rest?
I have them at my house right now. Yes, they're all at the Wayside.
They're not at different locations?
Nope, they're all, they're all gonna be at the Wayside Rest. I have so I have got, well, I've reached out to the Black Duck Fire Department to see if they would be able to help put lights in trees. Because of the time restraints, last year I did not have enough time to get some help. It actually ended up being me out there for four or five days. My dad came out for two and Deanne Adams came out for a couple hours the first day just to get all the lights up. It was a very long process and we only had one eight-foot ladder that Mike from the city had, but he would use to put lights on the flagpoles behind the big Black Duck. So I reached out to the fire department, I'm hoping to get a phone call back from them. I also did talk to the guys that were at the Wayside Rest for the Backwood Bash who were had the big lift that were lifting kids up. They gave me the number to who to contact about how I'm gonna come out and possibly help put Christmas lights up. Okay, yeah, so I'm hoping they come out. I did have one question. Is there any rules or anything about the the light poles that are in the Wayside Rest, do they need to be on? Is there? There is? Well, my thought was asking if we could manipulate the lights around it to have lights at the sensor, so they just aren't always lit.
You can check what Mike on that. But I'm pretty sure they're on a sensor, so they're gonna be on when the sweet lights are on.
Okay, I know they all have like a solar meter at the top of them as well, I'm sure if you know, we did have one of them off last year and it, it still was, it, everything was lit up.
And that was probably due in part to those, the run that they're connected to, runs down frontage and frontage wasn't wet either.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
Probably connected to that. That electrical line that runs straight down, but you could double check the plank when it gets back.
Any questions for Tony? I think you did a great job last year, I think. I would rate it out, it'll be a good event this year. Definitely got city support, or do we need to put this into a formal, formal motion, Christina?
Yeah, I would do it. We did a lot of time, even though there's no real money. It's just that you're in support of the event and the city's okay with paying the electrical. I don't really have a dollar amount for you.
I, I don't either.
I don't think, I was very much anyway.
Christmas lights are usually not too bad.
I, I didn't make a phone call and do a full breakdown of how much each bulb costs again. I think the, the total for what I had last year was like three hundred and fifty for like, I don't remember how many, but maybe it was approved for five hundred for it, but.
Women in my head, I wouldn't know what to do with that one.
Oh, it was like an hour breaking down the phone, it would be the electrical expert. Technical conversation that I was lost at half the time, like, could you just give me a number? Yeah, I, I don't know about watts and voltage and all that, I just want to give you a number.
Someone wanna make that motion?
Motion to approve the blow on the snow for the twenty-sixth of November and for the city to pick up the extra electricity for the lights.
Motion, second, very further discussion. All those in favor? I, I oppose. And none?
May I ask a question of Tony, so to go here, I know that this, the Chamber of Commerce is carrying any donations that you receive, so there is a little bit, my memory isn't very good. Yeah, it's not very much in there, but if you get them this year, and I'm going to ask for them.
I have that meeting on the next Wednesday.
Yes, yes, so.
So, yeah.
Lori or I can tip them that once this one.
Yeah, I know last year the city was actually helpful, we actually got all the donations dropped out here and then Christina.
Yeah, whatever. Well, I don't know, that'd be okay.
Okay. Here we go. It gets official when she stands up.
A bit too much. I just have a slew of dates and one action item. I have a resolution twenty-two, twenty-three that would, I'm asking for support of the council formally. Last Tuesday, I attended the Bill Tranny Commissioners Meeting, asking for support for the limited deputy registrar here at City Hall. By statute, any new office that opens within a county, the county that hosts the main deputy registrar has to decline ownership, if you will, of that DMV prior to it going to the office holder, whether it's a city or private. So what you've heard on chat about, or you heard anything on the radio was our county commissioners will support by declining the ownership of it, if you will. So now that I have that official, and that's down to the state, I'm asking for support at this point. And just to give you a timeline, I, I still don't have an official launch date. I can tell you that the state is working on the background portion with the financial level and authority because that background part takes about four to six weeks. So I'm still hoping that there will be an open date for at least to do tabbering laws by November. I've learned that the title transfer section of the DMV takes up to six months for training. Which may be ongoing, but we'll be able to do title or tab transfers, title tab rules right away once we are open. So if that helps you guys, because I'm sure there's been a lot of questions out there. So for tonight, I just moved up resolution on this resolution phase.
Brilliant.
I move to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution supporting the establishment of a deputy registered office in the city of Black Duck.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I oppose. Good.
Item F is for council to consider holding a public hearing on November seventh. This is to consider the adoption of a spending plan for tax increment financing for districts one, four, and one-six. This discussion came about at the last work session from Elers, from Todd Hagan. Todd and I will work on a spending plan based on the conversations that we've had at the last work session and tweak it prior to that public hearing. But I need to have that date called and that would just preface your regular meeting. You would officially approve calling that public hearing and move on with that.
Yeah, I will make the motion to approve the public, calling the public hearing on November seventh. Twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. None motion carries.
I have to have a spending plan for you to review by the work sessions, so. Post it and everything. Item G for council consideration is to call a special meeting on October twenty-second. Proceeding the work session to hear the first reading of an ordinance. Amending chapter fifteen, which is our land use and subdivision ordinance. And then the final reading on November seventh to approve. The backstory on this is there is not administrative authority in our land use ordinance, chapter fifteen, providing the planning administrator, which I resign in, to have property divisions completed. So we have been completing these and sending them on to Charlene Stirk at the county without official ordinance approval. And this issue with the main street property with that one point eight seven feet that needs to be conveyed. So the theater can be done easily administratively by deducting it from the existing parcel that we combined and adding it to the other parcel. It's an administrative thing, cities do it all the time. I've actually been doing it with unknown to me, the authority to allow the city to do it. Now, all the public hearings and all the input from the community and surrounding properties have been done for all these ones that I've been filing with the county. But our city attorney recognized that there is not the language in our ordinance supporting it. And he's encouraging us to change that ordinance so that we can catch us in the end. Of course, Beltrani County, although they are a recorder, they are not responsible for knowing our ordinances. If we send them something, we're, we're the ones that are to know that we're sending it to them correctly. So although we've been doing this with the steps correctly, we've read too much into our existing ordinance. Providing that we have the authority to do so, and we don't. So this ordinance revision that I'll be reading and doing on the second will give us final approval to do that all, at all times, so it's it's kind of a catch 22. We've been doing it already and everything's legal, but if anybody else were to come down in the future and say, yeah, I don't think that this is right, they could question it. And then they could come back to us, so our city attorney is drafting amendment to the ordinance. And I'll do that reading first on the twenty-second, but it has to be an official meeting in order to do that now. So I'm asking for the council to call that special meeting prior to work session.
Just like piling them off, huh?
I do. They're all on the same date, so this should be. I don't know, let's try it.
I, I got it.
Hey.
Keep going.
I know.
That was long here already.
I do.
So then we will, I will call a special meeting for October twenty-second.
October twenty-second? That's be the twenty-four, that's a typo. Yeah, my apologies to everyone. Thanks for checking on that. I, I do apologize. I was looking at the wrong month.
I will correct my statement.
Please do so.
October twenty-fourth, I would hear my call a special meeting on Black of City Council.
I'll make sure mine's changed on my notice.
It happens.
Have the work session on there, I want to. No, we're gonna be here Saturday. Yeah, no.
You may not have a form.
You have a first, but you don't have a second.
Thank you, all those, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nobody, we all wanna be here for an extra meeting.
H is just something that was brought to me at my attention at the end of last week.
I was wondering.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I did have somebody, a resident that's been around for a long time bring to my attention the state of our goldback. And the history of it, obviously, which we knew it was down by Lisa's building when it was a creamery and got moved over here, so the city owns that lot, the city owns the duck. We've, as a community, have allowed people to sit and stand and climb and everything on our duck, which is fine. However, our duck is in a little poor shape. And our duck hasn't had any hard repair for some time. Cheryl Willhoney went ahead and did some painting to the base last summer for on us on her own spare time. The paint for that, but this crack in Mr. Duck's head is pretty bad. And this is a fiberglass structure, so this citizen is encouraging the city to look and seek for some funding and have our duck repaired. Obviously, this is also in the public works bucket, so I'll talk to Mike when he gets back, but I'm gonna reach out to Marcia down at the city of the Niggy, because I know our pollen babe has had some big repairs in the past couple of years. One for abuse issues and two just for age, so if I can find maybe a grant from maybe Region Two Arts Council or the Nielsen Foundation or something that could support this. You know, I, I know that the the finances, just to report it, repair pollen babe can get up into the thousands and tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yeah, so I don't know what this is gonna cost us, but I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that this is, it's starting to deteriorate.
Judging from size of that crack, we should do something that's more immediate.
Yes.
Water.
Yes, water getting in there is not gonna be a good thing.
Particularly since we're getting into the freezing water. Very quickly.
And it's probably been happening for quite a few years too.
Exactly.
Yeah. It's my understanding about twenty-five years ago, it was repaired. I don't know, that's when it. Um I don't know, that's when it moved.
That sounds about right.
Um but um the backstory I gave you was the gentleman in Dick Vogel that actually. Put some time and effort into it, um I guess he made news. So he had some experience with fiberglass, he's also in charge of moving it. Um when it relocated, so.
He repaired it.
Yeah, um I mean, I can talk with public works about roping it back off, um. We'll have to do some, some short term.
Definitely, can we, yeah, we'll bring it up at the work session to have a, a good sit down with it and.
But what we can do in the interim.
In the interim and. Anything that pulls up the crack.
Until, we protect it until we get. So our work session, I, um just because.
We can cock it up. Duck, duck too. I like to, we can put the cocky and have it going up. I mean, you could. Yeah, even a fiberglass, like resin or something, just temporary to go in there and.
This may be lacking in one sharing, it's already in there too, I'd say.
I know. But that, that's why it would, it would be a great topic for a work session.
In the meantime, if there's anybody out there that has a resource that knows how to um.
Well.
Help.
Brian.
Sustain this, cause the, the, this unit was originally made out of crochet, you know, and then it was fiberglass afterwards, so it's been. You know, amended over the years, but um.
To talk to them.
We don't know if this is surface or.
Marcia.
Go all the way down.
Anyway, Brian would.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I think you should repair it.
Yeah.
As somebody that's been around for a while, there was a infamous incident about four years ago where it was horribly vandalized. Pulled off the pedestal and people woke up to find it in three pieces in the middle of Main Street.
Uh I heard it was in the middle of the lake at one point.
Hmm, I don't know about that, but they, they pulled it off with some luggage, hoping after a night of excessive refreshments. And the gentleman, since they have big mouths, were caught. Their sentence was, in an effort to find something worse than the death, then the judge sentenced them to come to a blocked up city council meeting. And publicly apologized for what they did to the duck. This is a sentence where it's, and that, that was. Quite nervous. And they drove immediately to the north before the border, I think.
So anyway, our Black Duck made a little, you know, fee, so.
Guess it does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um the last few items uh in my report are just a number of meetings that are coming up. Um this Wednesday is the development court meeting at eleven o'clock. Um next Wednesday, the nineteenth is the next planning commission meeting. On the twentieth, which was the, a week from Thursday, there's a personnel committee meeting uh here at eight. And then also, um the twentieth at nine thirty is the next Black Duck ambulance court meeting. And then at ten thirty is the next combined maintenance and police uh facility construction meeting here at City Hall, so very busy Thursday. Uh on the twenty first, I have a recovery scoping meeting, it's the next step with FEMA on the disaster. Um from April twenty third. And on the twenty fourth, twenty fourth is the next work session and the special meeting that we just called. Uh November third would be the next combined maintenance and um facility construction meeting at ten thirty. And then uh November seventh is the regular city council meeting. Lots of dates, any questions on those?
It's not a joint powers meeting, there's no. There's no powers, doesn't need to be ambulances.
Markover, probably not.
No. I'm just making sure.
I believe so. And then under the twenty third election, uh recapping a few dates here. Um right now, um. The absentee or mail-in balloting can happen, uh that goes until the twenty fourth. Um November first, we will be doing our health, healthcare facility absentee voting here in Black Duck. At both uh Good Samaritan, the assisted living, and Serenity. November fifth and seventh, the county auditor's office um are open still for absentee voting. And then on November eighth is our Minnesota state election, a general election, which includes our municipal, city of Black Duck, and the school board. I have supplied the general notice of the election as well as the sample ballot on for your review. In addition, this will also be posted in American coming up on the twenty second and then the Saturday prior to the election. And then on November fourteenth, uh city council will hold their canvassing. Um meeting to canvas the general election. Any question about the upcoming elections?
What was spelled Maury's name wrong?
What?
Okay.
So, I hope not. I can the whole thing and. And that's all I have. For a couple community events.
Um I will be speaking tomorrow at the Black Duck Senior Center. Just giving a rundown as to what the city's been up to. Who all of us are, cause uh folks, believe it or not, don't know yet. They don't know me.
What time is that again?
And it's after their board meeting, so it's kind of a, I think they, they need at like eleven and then it goes. Probably won't be until the afternoon.
Okay.
They have two separate meetings ahead. But to mention all the city apartment heads and everything that's uh. Uh anybody else have anything? You wanna introduce Keyan, I wish she was here, but.
Yeah, so Keyan Verbridge has um accepted a position that the development corps and the chamber are co-funding. As an events coordinator. And what Keyan will be doing is he will basically then um. Taking charge of and leading our, our events calendar that's on our website as well as any social media. And coordinating specific, particularly with um Kyle Waterman from clinical. To make sure that that's gonna stay on top and everything, um he's got a. Um the info at Black Duck MN email. And any community organization that has an event, whether it be church or school or public. That can be shared, so there's one landing page for everything, you know, we are going to, so. This contact information is in there, it's just another way for us to get the word out.
And that's big.
Hopefully it goes great.
Get all those groups tied together. Important. Anything else?
The chamber meeting on October nineteenth at noon is actually going to be at the golf course once again, and the reason for that is uh Sherif and Vital will be present. Uh do a presentation on the jail study, much like uh. Uh JW did a couple meetings ago for the city council. Um we relocated the meeting to the golf course so that um Sherif Vital can have a, us, a little bit more. Uh quieter setting so that we weren't competing with other um people eating and talking. He can give a presentation to all the chamber business owners.
Was everybody present at that meeting? Who was here, then?
Yeah.
I'm just refreshing my memory.
Yep, and if you're following the information, the uh public comment period still goes until November, but the last um. The last meeting the commissioners had in regards to the jail, they uh agreed to move forward with a new jail. Um what that's still gonna look like and how it's gonna get funded, those committees are still working on those pieces, so I imagine if you're. Present to the chamber meeting, you'll probably hear some more pieces on that, because they're meeting almost every week, that committee that. JW discussed at, your thing. Um and there's a public comment link on the county's website, so if you wanna read more about it, I encourage people to go there.
That's where I have been sending everyone.
Perfect. Perfect.
Those. Well. People. Well, with that. Nobody wants to go home?
Yeah.
Counselor Johnson has motion to adjourn, adjourn a second. Adjourn, thank you.